So, welcome everyone to the Wednesday, April 18th, meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. First item on our agenda is minutes. We have no minutes tonight, okay? So, we're going to move on then to our next item, which is public hearing. S U B 2018 dash zero one, Elsie Federman, 148 Logtown Road, Echo Woods Two subdivision. And in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, and the Town of Amherst Rules and Regulations, governing the subdivision of land, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and also sent to abutters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed definitive subdivision plan application. And this is a request to amend this definitive subdivision plan to remove an unused land restriction running to the town, a reservation that was due to have provided access to a now-closed landfill on the north side of Bounser Town Road. And this is at map 18D, parcel 82, in the RN zoning district. So, we're going to proceed in our usual order here. The first is, are there any board member disclosures on this item? Okay, then we'll move on to the applicant's presentation.
Good evening. My name is David Burson. I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson. I'm here tonight on behalf of Elsie Federman, who is the property owner of 148 Logtown Road. Really simply, we're seeking a modification of the previously approved definitive subdivision plan from 1975, the Echo Woods Two subdivision, primarily so that my client can build a detached supplemental accessory apartment for herself that's ADA accessible. The reason we're here before you tonight is back in 1975, when the definitive subdivision plan was created, the planning board had reserved to itself a restriction, condition number 11, essentially allowing them to take that property in the future if they so chose for the purposes of installing a road connecting Logtown Road to the landfill, which is directly southeast for my client's property. The plan has been on record for approximately forty, forty-plus years. The town has never seen fit to take that land. We spoke with Guilford Mooring at the DPW, who also indicated that the town has no interest in the future of taking that land. That was confirmed by Dave Zomack and the town. So, simply speaking, we're here tonight seeking that that 60-foot-wide no-build zone that was created by the 1975 subdivision plan be removed and the plan be modified as such. We did provide a proposed, oh, goods and tight, a proposed new lot 18, and that is before you was here tonight as well. Happy to answer any additional questions related to that. I do have a copy of the site plan that we are proposing that has been submitted to the zoning board of appeals for the special permit associated with the accessory apartment. Additionally, I have some letters of support Elsie wanted me to bring tonight from two of her abutters, as well as communication from Beth Wilson relative to the lack of need to apply with the Conservation Commission relative to this site. And additionally, and finally, I also have a correspondence with the abutter directly to the north, who is the lot 24 owner, who also has a 60-foot-wide reservation on her land. And we originally were requested by the town to seek to remove both of them. We did approach her neighbor to essentially say, "We're willing to remove this as part of our application," and she had no interest in that. So, I have that correspondence here as well. So, if you're interested in seeing any of that, please let me know. I'm happy to provide it.
Great. Thank you. We're going to get to public comments in a moment unless you're with the applicant.
I'm the other one.
Okay, we're going to get to that a little bit later in this process, but thank you. So, now, we're going to move on to the report on the site visit. There was a site visit held this morning. We have a report in our packets. Would anyone that was present at the site visit care to add to that? So, I'll just comment that there weren't any major observations from the board members present. The site visit report was fairly straightforward. So, we'll move on now to questions from the board. No questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
Is there a written documentation of the fact that the town is no longer interested in exercising rights to that strip?
So, we spoke with Guilford Mooring directly over the phone, but I believe the town did in fact, the planning department did in fact, confirm that with Guilford Mooring. So, I don't have something directly in writing, but if Ms. Breschtrip would...
I don't have anything in writing either, but I did speak with both Guilford Mooring and Dave Zomack, the assistant town manager, and both of them expressed that the town has no interest in that piece of land.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Jack?
Did you say you had a more detailed plan?
I do. So, this plan is what has been submitted to the zoning board of appeals as far as the site plan. So, while it's not technically relevant to tonight's discussion, I thought it would be worthwhile having it, just in case you wanted to see it.
Other questions from the board at this time? Okay, we'll move on to comments and questions from the public. Please come forward to the mic and introduce yourself.
So, I'm from that lot, 144, and there was never any...
Sorry, what was your name, sir?
Alberto Ortiz.
Thank you.
There was never any communication with us about, you know, what was going to go on, and from my understanding, they're going to, they have already multiple properties in like the neighboring lot that they rent out, and now they want to build a third one, from what I understand, and it's going to devalue like the property I'm on, is like, that's kind of my concern. I don't see why they need to build another one.
So, at this time, this is not an application to build the supplemental dwelling, which was referenced?
I do have emails that was exchanged, if you guys want to read them.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take any material you have. I just want to clarify my understanding, and the applicant can clarify if I'm mistaken, but they stated that they plan to build a supplemental detached dwelling unit. And so, if that were the case, that would require an additional process for them to obtain the special permit for that. I just wanted to let you be aware that there'd be a time for additional public input relative to that application. Sorry, are these all, so there's one copy of each of these emails, is that right?
Unfortunately, I didn't know I should have brought more, but...
I have copies of all those emails.
I'm not sure if he has everything I have, but he could...
So, there's five separate, or four separate emails here? I think we should end up with staff at the end of this, if staff has not already have a copy of these. Are there board members that would like to review these at this time?
If I may approach, I can...
Absolutely. Thanks. So, could I clarify, do you have an issue with what's being requested now, or you have an issue with the potential further down the road for additional structure to be constructed?
I just think there wasn't enough communication with what's going on. Like, I'm kind of unaware, I just kind of got it third party. But, just so I'm clear, she's applying to take the land for herself, or, I mean, from what I understand, isn't it kind of on both lots?
She's asking the town to remove a restriction on her land.
Okay.
For access that's no longer needed by the town. It's possible, and it's been stated, that the applicant will apply in the future for a special permit to construct another structure there. And if that's the issue that you take issue with, then at that time, you may want to come back, and that would be before the zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
Rob?
So, I think the, maybe the issue that he's talking about is that the restriction, I believe, is on both properties, and they're only asking to take it off of the one property, not off of his property, off of Elsie's property.
So, I would just ask the board to take the opportunity to actually read the emails that were sent. I was very clear in what we were offering and what the, how the restriction worked, that it was a no-build zone that affected both properties and that we were willing to remove that. I believe, although I can't speak for the planning department, that staff did also attempt to speak with Ms. Herrera and had a difficult time with that as well.
Chris?
I did write to her, and I also called her. I didn't get a call back from her, but I did get an email back that she says that she wasn't interested, and she was objecting to the potential building of the new unit.
And just for future, for further clarification, I apologize, I don't have your name, but... So, the application for the special permit has been filed, and that is on for hearing on May 10th.
Okay, thank you for that.
May I ask, do you have correct phone numbers and email addresses to make sure that the correspondence goes where it's supposed to go?
Well, as you can actually see from the email chain, she didn't respond to me, and then I directly responded back to her.
Just...
And yes, Elsie did have a correct phone number.
And I actually went next door, when I didn't reach her, to explain and ask her if she would like us to try to remove that at no cost to her, that I was paying for the attorney, and there would be no charge for her. And we tried reaching her, but she was on vacation, and she sent an email. And I think Christine tried reaching her, David Zomack tried reaching her, to let them know, "This is what we're trying to do." And we really tried, but you have those other two letters from my neighbors?
I do. Elsie also wanted me to provide you with two other abutters who had provided letters of support.
I have a neighbor across the street who decided, "I want you to see those letters from my neighbors who feel they would like me to remain in the community on Logtown Road rather than going to an institution, because I'll be 91-years-old, and we're looking for a handicapped accessible unit to the zoning board of appeals, so that I have access. It's my doorways for wheelchair and everything.
I have no further materials for you.
Are there additional comments or questions from the public? If you could just come up to the mic when you're going to speak, please?
I'm just going to pull this off.
Just so like I understand, she's applying to take the restriction off of what land the town owns?
She's applying to take a restriction off of land that she owns.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I think you guys already know what I, the landlord of, you know, the lot had said, that she doesn't agree with it. So, I guess I don't have anything else to say.
Okay, thanks. It's like there's no other public present to comment. Applicant's response, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Thank you. This is time for final comments and questions from the public. Applicant and the board. Michael?
Yeah, I have a question. I was unclear from the gentleman who spoke as to what his relationship with Ms. Herrera Roosevelt is.
She's my mom.
She's your mother.
Yeah, and I've been living at that house since I was young.
Yeah, you're representing her?
Yeah, because she's out right now. She works in Worcester, so it's very difficult for her to come here right after work, so I came.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to make sure that you're aware that, and maybe you could speak to me afterwards, about the date and the time for the next hearing.
Other comments, questions from the board? If not, entertain a motion at this time. Rob?
I move to close the public hearing and to release the restriction on this Federman's property.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Maybe you could mention that this is an amendment to a subdivision plan, definitive subdivision plan?
So, there were, there were four requests described in the memorandum from staff to the planning boards. Rob, does your motion include all of those requests? It could be read too, I just want to clarify.
Sure.
Rob?
I move to remove the road restriction from lot 18, remove the limitation on lot 18, for lot 18, on building within 60 feet of the property line between lot 18 and lot 24. amend condition 11 of the definitive subdivision plan approval to remove the road reservation on lot 18, and approve the plan entitled "Modification of the definitive subdivision plan of Echo Woods Two subdivision, prepared for Elsie Federman dated February 19th, 2018", showing removal of the road restriction, and the note requiring the 60-foot setback.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. The second also amended? Who was the second on that?
I'll second that.
Great. Is there any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? And abstaining? Okay, that is 5-0 with one abstention. Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you for coming in. Okay, so, Chris, yes?
When the meeting is over, I will need you all to sign these plans. These are the amended definitive subdivision plans, okay?
Okay, so, we're now going to move on to our next item, which is a public hearing scheduled for 7:15. And in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, these public hearings have been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to abutters. The hearings are being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on the proposed site plans. And this is SPR 2018 dash 11 and SPP 2018 dash zero one, U Drive LLC, University Drive, mixed-use building, requesting site plan review approval to construct a mixed-use building under section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw with 36 residential units and one office with associated parking and site improvements, and requesting special permit to allow more than 10 dwelling units above the first floor located at map 13B, parcel 33, in the BL zoning district. Are there any board member disclosures on this? Jack?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to leave the room?
Leave the room.
Okay. Now, we'll hear the applicant's presentation whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson here in Amherst. Here on behalf of U Drive LLC, and its application, as the chairman noted, for site plan review approval and special permit approval. The special permits relate to both more than 10 residential dwelling units above the first story, and also a modification relative to height under footnote A of your dimensional regulations. We're also requesting a waiver under section 7.9 from the parking regulations, and then we do just have to touch on the fill, because it is a fill site, but because we're getting a special permit, those can be conditions incorporated into any approval that the board makes.
May I just...
I'm not very good at multitasking.
Yes, Chris.
Comment that the quorum for a special permit is six members of the planning board. In this case, we have five who are present tonight. Two other planning board members are not able to come tonight, but they're going to invoke the Mullen Rule and listen to the recording and hope to participate in the vote whenever the meeting is continued to.
Thanks for adding that.
Is that me? Okay. So, if you take a look at either behind or to the side of you, you'll see a site rendering of what we expect the entire site to look like if we get approval from this board. This entirety is five, about 5.8 acres. What we've done is on November 1st, you may recall that you endorsed an approval-not-required plan to subdivide this lot, and the lot line is about where my cursor is going to be, dividing it into a northerly section and a southerly section. This northerly section, we have received approval from the zoning board of appeals for a 3,660-square-foot restaurant at that site named Savannah's to be run by the Jolly family. I'll get into the proposal here in one moment, but I'd like to give a little bit of background, because this all started back in 2000, and it probably started in 2014, quite frankly, with discussions with the then-town manager and assistant town manager and planning director. But in 2016, this board was the sponsor of a zoning article to change this zone from office park to limited business. At the April 2016 town meeting, we were successful in receiving 2/3 of the vote, and the zone was changed. These two uses, this mixed-use building on the south and the restaurant on the north, could not have existed without that approval. So, we think we're really fulfilling what the board was looking for back in 2016. In 2017, because University Drive has a restriction on it, which only allowed six access points, and because those six access points already exist, in order to change such an encumbrance, such an easement, we also needed town meeting vote. So, last, I think it was last April, Barry went through, and I'll introduce the team in a moment. Barry went through and got town meeting approval for the accessway. We were also in front of the select board, who allowed the accessway. We were in front of the Transportation Advisory Committee. We were in front of the Public Shade Tree Committee, and ultimately received approval from Alan Snow, the tree warden, to remove a tree for this accessway here. We've also been through the Chapter 61A process. The entirety of the parcel was in chapter classification. There will be about $40,000 worth of rollback taxes that will be paid upon the conveyance. Right now, the town is receiving about $69 a year in taxes for this parcel. That's going to go up, at least on this southerly parcel, to at least $100,000, if not more. As I mentioned, we had the A and R portion of it. We've been through the Agricultural Commission, because this is, has recently been farmed, and so, there is an agreement for the developer to pay to the Agricultural Commission for agricultural use $10,000 upon the receipt of a building permit. As I mentioned, we've been through the zoning board of appeals process for this northerly piece, and we have received Conservation Commission approval in the form of orders of conditions for both this southerly piece and this northerly piece. One other piece, if you were at the site visitor, if you're familiar with University Drive, you'll know that there are two lanes for biking traffic that exist in this area. Part of the proposal, we're working with Guilford Mooring and Jason Skiles from the DPW and Engineering Departments, and we have received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission for this work, is to, and this, one more thing, we have had discussions with the Transportation Advisory Committee and have determined that because we're putting in this accessway here, it would be best to eliminate the potential points of conflict. And so, to do that, we would have to go down to one bike lane. It was either we keep the outside bike lane nearer University Drive, or the inside bike lane nearer the wetlands. After pretty significant discussions, the town is thinking about doing a complete street on University Drive, and as a result, it was determined that this outside lane may at some point in the future be used for that complete street project. And so, if we were going to put a dedicated bike lane, it should be to the east of that. And so, what you'll see here is, this has been loomed and seeded. This bike lane, the easterlymost side, is staying where it is, and it's extending about three feet to the west underneath these maple trees. And again, that has, you know, we've been through the Transportation Advisory Committee, we've talked with Guilford and Jason, and we've been through the Conservation Commission process. So, that's kind of how we got to where we are today in front of you. With me this evening, Barry Roberts, developer from U Drive LLC, architect from Kuhn Riddle, Charles Roberts, our civil engineer, Phil Henry from Civil Design Group, and our landscape architect, Andy Bone from Place Alliance. You may also remember that we were here two other times. Once, we had a plan that had three buildings, a building right here, a building right here, and then a building over here. There was a claim, and there is a pending lawsuit for, an adverse possession claim, where the abutter has claimed that they have openly and notoriously utilized this portion of the land for a period of 20 years, and therefore, it becomes theirs. While we dispute the merits of it, understanding the reality of it, that lawsuit can take up to three years. And so, we thought it was best, in order to actually have this development occur, to try to negotiate a settlement, which we have come to a settlement. The last time we were here, we had a four-story building about in this area and a three-story building in this area, which again, required zoning board of appeals approval. Since that time, we had gone back to the drawing board. We had discussions with the building commissioner and with the conservation agent, Beth Wilson, to determine whether or not a mixed-use building could be cited in this location. And quite frankly, the reason is, the, under your zoning bylaw, apartments are limited to no more than 24 units in a building. And that was really the pushback and the problem of how to get the density on-site to make this project economically feasible, and then to have a, an attractive, affordable design. And we were running into some problems with the two, the two buildings, and also the fact that if you're only allowed 24 units, and you want to make sure you get enough money to sustain the development, you might be putting in three and four bedrooms instead of studios, ones and twos, which fortunately, this building has. And so, after discussions with the building commissioner and understanding under your mixed-use section of your zoning bylaw, if we were to include, which we have, one office space of approximately 200 square feet, we would then, we could avail ourselves of having additional residential units. And so, what we've done is, and what we're proposing, is to have that one office space, which exists outside of the 75-foot wetland, commercial wetland buffer. And we are proposing 36 residential units in this about 30,000 gross square foot building. Those 36 units are going to be broken down into four studios, 11 one-bedrooms, two, sorry, 18 two-bedrooms, and three three-bedrooms. So, you can see that the shift has been relatively marked from the three and the four-bedroom-heavy design to a studio one and two-heavy design. We will also include four affordable units. And I've had discussions with Pam Parmaking and Debbie Turgeon over at the Amherst Housing Authority. They have, and also based on my experience with Presidential, I asked them to put some numbers together to figure out where the need is, and to see if, if we had proposed, which we are proposing, one studio, two one-bedrooms, and one two-bedroom unit being restricted as affordable, if that would work. And Pam came back, and she really liked the idea. So, that would be our proposal, and I've got an email that I can submit, supporting Amherst Housing's desire and capacity, and also their inclination to have that breakdown of units. Let me see, what else I want to talk about?
Chris?
Would Mr. Reedy go back and say what the affordable units are going to be? I didn't catch that.
Sure, if I may, Mr. Chairman. One studio, two one-bedroom, and then one two-bedroom. It was just found that the three bedrooms, there's just not a need for the three bedrooms, through base experience up at Presidential, but also through the information that the Amherst Housing Authority had. Understanding that your zoning bylaw does have a, or at least a zoning bylaw that is going to be proposed and has been proposed for town meeting, does have a provision that requires a breakdown commensurate with the units that you have, we would ask for, whether it's relief, however you want to term it, not to provide any of those three-bedroom units, but only to have studios, ones and twos, as I've laid out. And so, I mean, quite simply, you've got one building, three stories. We are requesting a height waiver, and I'll get to that a little bit. 48 parking spaces. What you had in the submitted materials was 50 parking spaces, but through the Conservation Commission process, what we had, what we did was we pulled parking spaces out of the 25-foot buffer area. And so, it's not in the wetlands, but they're within 25 feet of the wetlands. And so, we think we've struck a nice balance, and I think we can get into the revegetation plan and the other landscape plantings that we have on-site. Of the 48 spaces, three of them will be ADA spaces. We are also requesting to have 27 compact spaces. And I'll note, they're not the typical compact spaces, which allow eight feet wide by 16 feet long... feet long. These are really eight feet by 18 feet. Your bylaw allows up to 50%, we're asking for a bit more than that. Of the 48, we're asking for 27 of them to be compact. We are also, because of that, proposing a condition. Our leases will have, and we're also proposing a condition that's imposed by the board in any approval they give, where, where your bylaw requires two spaces per dwelling unit, what we're asking for is for the studios, the ones and the two-bedrooms, we're going to restrict those to one parking space per each of those units. So, there are 33 of those units requiring 33 spaces. The three, three-bedroom units will comply with the two parking spaces per unit for an additional six parking spaces. So, the residential unit count will require 39 spaces. The office will require one space, which gets us to 40. And so, we've got eight spaces, and three of them will be ADA, whether, if they're not utilized by a tenant who is also needs the ADA space, which would leave five excess spaces for either guests or delivery, Uber ride-sharing, you know, a place for them to stop. Barry's also considering an electric vehicle charging station as well. We think that, that waiver is justified because of the proximity to the bike path, the proximity to restaurants, and the pharmacy, and the medical clinic, and the grocery store. So, everything's really, there's a lot of connectivity to this site, and we don't anticipate, and it's going to be part of the lease, so if they want more cars, they can't lease here. And we think that the market will bear it out, that this, this is appropriate. I'll also note that back here in the corner, as part of that settlement with the abutter, what we've done is, we will convey a portion of this property here, and a portion of this property here, to this southerly abutter. We're also proposing to put a six-foot-high chain-link fence and arborvitae's leading from this wetland all the way over to this wetland here. So, to really box it in, our trash collection is proposed here. We've got the hammerhead back here for proper garbage truck circulation, and also fire-access circulation. I mean, we can talk traffic, we can talk site, we can talk drainage, we can talk landscaping, but I think we'll probably turn it over to, for architectural. If you've got any general questions, I know I've talked for a long time, so I'm more than happy to answer them or turn it over.
Feel free to continue with your presentation.
Go ahead. Okay.
Hi there. I'm Charles Roberts, Kuhn Riddle Architects, and as Tom says, we've been working on this project for, for a while now, and it is in its third iteration. It has a nice, picturesque, I think, sort of plan and overall character to, to the building and the site design. The, everything about the site design and the building design itself are about accommodating wetlands, setbacks, drainage issues, and, and organically integrating the building into the site around, around all those various site-designed components. The site, and I guess, you know, Phil and Andy will talk more about the site specifically, but the site does step up to the east in general, and so, the building steps up as well. You can see that in some, in some other elevations. Let's see here, there we go. So, what you're seeing over on the left side of, of these drawings is the, the west side of the building stepping up to the east. And, and the first floor of the building is, is, is a constant level that steps up from an entry point in this location, right, right, right around in here. And this gets to the issue that Tom was talking about earlier with the, the height modification we're asking for, to 39 foot three, which is to the high point, but as you can see, as it averages out across the grade, for the, for the overall building itself, it's, it's somewhat less. We figured it's around 36 feet as an average height, which just helps, again, think about bringing the, the building into scale. So, it's, the building is three stories high. It's a mix of, as, as Tom says, studios, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. One of the advantages to this building design is that it's, all floors are serviced by elevators, so that improves accessibility for units in general, so that all units are group one and group two ADA-compliant units. It's easier for people to, you know, move in, move out, and provide sort of universal access throughout the building itself. The first floor plan here, again, oriented to the north, you can see there's two primary entries into the building on the east and west side, which are accessed from the parking along the street. You come in through here, up about a quarter of a level, half a level or so, to this main circulation spine, which runs down the length of the building. Breaking it up into these, into these two forms, which is, which is, you saw in some of the 3D images, help break the scale down to these recognizable gable-shaped forms, which are, which are, you know, friendly and accessible. And then, the other main entry is over, is over here, where we have the, you come in here, and there's a, and this is the elevator lobby that serves all three floors. This is the rental office that, that Tom was alluding to. And then, it's an array of, it's a mix of the, the various studios to three-bedroom apartments on the first floor. And then, as you move up to, to the second floor, the second, third, and fourth floor plans are, are similar. And you can see the, you can see the breakdown of the units by the color code, color code here with the, the light, lightest color being the studio merging into the, the darker orange color for the three-bedroom units.
And just to be clear, there's no fourth floor?
Did I say fourth floor? Oh, sorry. Second, third floor. There was a fourth floor at one point. This is a roof plan that, that shows these, the two main gable forms that, that run along the, the, the length of the unit layouts here, with that central spine in here being a flat roof, which will be drained with crickets internally. You can see the, the elevator override penthouse here. And so, it's, the roof is going to be all drained and directed in this, internally with those roof drains, and then we'll have, I believe we're going to have gutters around the perimeter, the outer perimeters of the edge, which will be directed away from the building to storm drainage systems. This is the, again, the, the south and north elevations. We're using a combination of fiber cement clabbered and panel siding to break the forms of the building up. The gray, the lighter blue-gray siding would be the, the panel, and then up above, the yellow clabbereds are from the upper two-thirds of the building. And then, that, that color comes around in here, and then forms the, the gable fronts and, and faces of the building.
I'll make one note. The packet you probably have has different colorings on the building itself. It was something that the developer had asked that the architect take a look at, and to have a different color palette, hopefully the board likes, or at least has some feedback. So, I think what you've got in front of you is blues, maybe burgundy, and a yellow, and I think what we've got here is the, the more muted grays and a marsh house yellow.
Yeah. The thought was to just kind of pull back a little bit on, on the color palette of the building. There's, I think there's enough going on here architecturally that's interesting with the forms of the building and the overall massing, without adding to, adding to that with, with trying to break down the colors into even... This is the, the unit layout count, count that...
Am I doing anything?
I'm not doing anything, yeah. Yeah, I'm right, I'm in free fall. So, these are some rendered views that give you sort of a bird's eye, you know, a ground-level perspective of what these are going to look like. This is, this is to the south of the building, we're going across the parking from, from the southeast, and you can start to see how these, these gable shapes that form the living areas within the units, and then these, these taller gable shapes at the end of each of the spines of the building help break down the, the scale and the size to, to make it friendly to the site. This is the view, this is a view from the rear, I think from the, the northeast, looking, standing back in, in, it's sort of like the wooded area. And this is a view, this is a view also from the, from the...
Southeast.
Southeast, right? Just, I guess we don't have one. So, this is the view actually from University Drive, as you're coming, as you're approaching the, the development from the south, coming sort of along, this would be, this would be what you would see from the bike path, actually, that Tom is describing, as you're approaching the, the southern entry to the driveway. And so, that is the basic layout of the building architecturally.
I have a question about the height.
Sure.
Because in the paperwork that was submitted originally, the height was given as 39 foot six inches, so I just wanted to know what we should consider as going to be the height that we're going to put in this, in this documentation.
Sure. And so, as you'll see in this slide, from grade to the peak is 44 feet five inches. That does track your bylaw, is compliant if you're requesting a waiver. You can't exceed, what's allowed in the zoning district is 35 feet. Your bylaw says you cannot exceed 10 feet above that at, at maximum. So, we've stayed under that, but your bylaw also says the way to measure these types is to look at the eve, and look at the ridge, and find the average. So, the average is 39 feet three inches on the street side, which is what your bylaw reads. If you, one of the things we just wanted to point out was, if, you know, you've got a grade change of about five feet from the easterlymost side to the westerlymost side. So, your average across the entirety is going to be less than that 39 feet three inches, but reading your bylaw literally, we wanted to be conservative and look at it as 39 feet three inches on, you know, to the midpoint between the ridge and the eve on the street side, which would be University Drive. For comparison, New Market Center has a peak of 40 feet, and I'll call it the Slabody Building, it's the one that UMass occupies, it's the large brick flat-roof building on University Drive. That's 39 feet, at least the permit says it's 39 feet. I think it's a little mounded, so it probably appears a little higher, but at least structurally it says 39 feet. So, given those two buildings, plus how this can be somewhat tucked into the topography, you've got Blue Hills, which is, I've got the elevation in the permit, I think it's a 200. University Drive's at 165 feet elevation, Blue Hills is at around 221 feet of elevation. So, you are talking about quite a, a climb, and just recall that it is tucked in there. And then, those, the motoring and pedestrian public traveling, Norwalk and University Drive will also have the UMass towers as a backdrop. So, we think that it fits in with the, the neighborhood, if you define it narrowly or more broadly.
So, is the figure 39 foot three inches?
That's a long way of answering that question. Yes, 39 feet three inches.
Great, thanks.
Good.
Take a seat.
Okay, yeah. So, we have been through the ConCom process. There was a peer review of the drainage, and a clean letter was issued. We, we did receive the order of conditions for this site, and also Jason Skiles had reviewed this, and we've got a clean letter from him, but I'm happy to have Phil kind of walk you through the drainage. You can be as in-depth as you want, or as cursory as you want, so.
Great.
For the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. I guess I'll give a broad overview and happy to answer any specifics. So, this site, as Tom had alluded to, it, it climbs from, from west to east, or from U-Drive to the, to the rear. And it actually climbs about 11 feet in topography. You know, granted, you know, the depth of that lot is about 450 feet, so it's a gradual rise in grades, somewhere between 2% and 4%. And that's Lot B, as, as we're defining it, the mixed-use project, mainly drains towards a centralized wetland area that, let's see, where's my mouse? That, there's a, there's a covert here, a piped covert that drains across University Drive, that eventually dumps along the west side of, of, of University Drive. And that's, that was our analysis point. That's where all the water goes today, and that's where we wanted to, to mitigate the water going in, in the, in the, you know, subsequent to the construction. So, what, what we did was, so now, now we're introducing a structure here that obviously has to be flat, although we couldn't achieve it completely flat, which is why there's a, there's a change in grade from the westerly side to the easterly side of about five feet. And then, the door, the two main doors also have a difference of, of three feet, as Mr. Roberts had, had explained. So, essentially, the, the roof drains, the entire roof drains actually to the east into this basin up here. And there were some challenges with, with the stormwater design, in, in the sense that we had high groundwater, and we had some favorable soils, although through the peer review, we were, we agreed to take a more conservative infiltration rate, which means, essentially means that your, your stormwater areas have to become larger. And we really wanted to focus on above-ground system, because we have all this area, despite the fact that we, we do have wetlands. So, as you will see here, the, these stormwater areas are uniquely shaped, because they're nestled between the structure itself and, and the vegetation, the wetlands, and, and the contours. However, despite that, we were able to get something to work, and, and that is, this roof, the, this roof is collected and piped directly into this infiltration basin, which, which holds up to the 100-year storm event, which is, which is the design standard. And then, the pavement area, which is shown here in light gray, which has the 48 parking spaces, also includes the dumpster enclosure, there's some bike, bike racks here, and that concrete all drains into a series of catch basins along the way. So, keep in mind, from this point here is about 165, we're about 176 and change back here, so it's 11 feet of grade change. So, naturally, all this water wants to come down U-Drive. So, along the way, we, we, we manipulate the grading such that we, we divert the water to catch basins, and we use curb where we, where we can, we use ridge lines where we can. And that's collected and piped, and then ultimately treated or pre-treated, and then discharged into this stormwater basin area here along the westerly side, which is the low point of the site. So, so as you would imagine, getting the water down was fairly easy, it's just making sure we got it into the right places, so that it can get treated and collected. And then, similarly, this basin can handle and accommodate up to the 100-year storm as well, such that we, we decrease our peak flow and we increase volume, which, which is, which is, which is oftentimes difficult to do, but in this case, we were able to achieve it. We increased the volume.
Decrease.
Sorry, decreased the volume, sorry, decreased the volume. Yeah, increasing volume is fairly easy, actually. Decreasing the volume is difficult. And, and then, so therefore, mitigating the flow and not making this pipe here, you know, we're not, we're not adversely affecting that existing infrastructure. Happy to answer any specifics.
I think that's good for now, thank you.
I have one question. The dark gray area just to the north of the, the, the catch basin you're talking about, that's wetland, correct?
Where? Right, right here?
Just to the, maybe the north is the right direction, just that way on the map.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any barrier between that wetland and the catch basin, or is that soon to be the same thing?
Are you, when you say catch basin, do you mean this, this stormwater area?
Catch area, yes.
Yeah, so this, this, this is not a catch basin, but it's a, it's a graded depression, right? So, picture a lawn area that, that had, that is bermed up on the low side, and then, and then graded in. So, there, there will be vegetation deciphering, like the limits of this basin, and obviously, this will be maintained, so just by, just by maintenance, it will be discernible between natural vegetation and... between natural vegetation and this area here.
But the overflow of stormwater?
Yeah, the overflow is a natural berm, such that if the water would rise to a certain level, it would just, it would just, it would rise and run over a controlled weir.
The, I'm going to get some of the terminology wrong, I'm sure, so you'll correct me, please. The drainage from the parking area goes into catch basins. Where do those then drain out?
Yep, that's a good question. So there are four catch basins and they're mainly located on the easterly, the southerly side of the development, because this is the low side of the development, where as we're grading the site, we want to obviously keep the water away from the building, so, but it's also coming down the page or towards University Drive. So those basins are on the southerly, on the southerly edge of the curb. Once they're collected, it's piped. There's a main trunk line coming down, down this main drive aisle, and then there's a proprietary device which will pretreat the water. And then that is daylighted and it's piped and discharged. There'll actually be a daylight pipe. After it's constructed, you'll be able to go and see a pipe from subsurface dumping into this pond. You'll see a twelve-inch pipe dumping into this pond. And then this water would fill up and then it will infiltrate almost in every storm. And then if there was a really large storm, it would begin to overflow as it's designed to do, in a controlled fashion, right about where my mouse is, and then it will meander its way to where it goes today.
Can you, in your plans, identify the distance between that pond, which you referred to it differently earlier? But the distance between that and the sidewalk and bike path, and then also the height difference between those, because that's where, if it floods, it's going to flood down into the sidewalk and then into the street. It's slower there.
Yes, so it is sloped and I could walk you through that. I would estimate that the berm, or this, between what you see here in light gray, green, to this, to the property line, okay? Actually, the berm right here is just outside, that controlled spillway is just where my mouse is. That's about twenty feet to the property line. And then that's probably another fifteen or sixteen feet, or another twenty feet, so to the bike path. But keep in mind here that this elevation, this spillway here is at elevation about one sixty-nine, you're at one sixty-four in here. So there's a five-foot grade change, and then it comes back up to the bike path.
I think if I just want to make a comment as a layman for the stormwater, I think they talk about ponds as a detention basin and I think they're one in the same. I think it's just the known creature of the civil engineers.
Thank you. These basins are also designed to infiltrate within seventy-two hours, oftentimes less than that. So yeah, I apologize for the use of the, so infiltration basin is the same thing as a pond, is the same thing as a stormwater area. It's a collection of water.
Is that the same thing as detention?
Detention is technically different than infiltration, because detention detains water and releases it, where infiltration allows infiltration and discards it to the soil.
So the town engineer has reviewed these and has no issues with the drainage as proposed?
Yeah, the town engineer reviewed it, there was a peer reviewer that reviewed it, and then the Butters engineer has reviewed it as well. So it's been vetted and reviewed.
A question or a comment on that's the first, I think, is maybe in the direction of David's question. This was designed as required for a hundred-year flood. If we had a five-hundred-year event, hypothetically, where would the outflows be?
Well, hypothetically speaking.
Of course.
When you're dealing with a storm that high, you're probably looking at the runoff actually getting into the catch basins themselves. So however, with that being said, they would go to low points and pond, which in this case would be the wetland areas. But that's an event that we don't design to.
Certainly, and that's understood. And the comment was that as this property has had various proposals over the years, rezoning and whatnot, the drainage was always an issue at the forefront of those discussions. So it's good to see a design that satisfies those requirements and that the town engineer is satisfied with. Other questions on drainage before we move on?
Okay, great. And then Andy, let me tee you up. And I think it's important to take a look at, and I'll go to this one first, the landscaping. If I could direct your attention, this is the currently degraded area, this is the farmed area that, which is outlined in the purple and then hatched by this orangey crosshatch. That's what's currently being used for agriculture. And I think what you'll see and what Andy can describe to you is the type of revegetation that's going to occur.
Thank you again for the record. My name is Andrew Bone with Place Alliance. I'm a landscape architect here on Amherst. So as Tom had shown you previously, the site is currently being used pretty extensively into the buffer zones and sometimes into the existing wetlands. So the proposed site is really sandwiched between these two wetland areas. There's a quite extensive reforestation and revegetation effort that will be done to restore these areas that are currently being used for agricultural purposes, row crops. So to restore those buffer zones is pretty significant, to restore the existing wetlands that are currently degraded is pretty significant. There is one crossing, for those that were on the site visit, there's a crossing with a wetland impact here, and we're proposing a two-to-one mitigation for that impact back here on the property, attaching it to the existing wetland areas. So what we have is a native revegetation plan within the buffer zones and sometimes even beyond. We have a fairly small and uniform maintained mown strip around the parking lot to keep some of the native vegetation from kind of spilling over onto the parking area, so to just try to keep a clean edge around the parking area. We have some lawn areas, some pretty minimal lawn areas around the back of the building, and then a fairly traditional kind of landscape planting plan with some larger shade trees in front of the building and adjacent to the parking areas. So they're kind of broken into two zones. We have the native reforestation area, which is a high intensity of planting, but smaller material. Excuse me. And then as you get closer to the building, more of the manicured areas, that's where the vegetation is more traditional, two-and-a-half inch caliber trees, some more ornamental style, but they are native plantings around the building, really trying to do as much as we can. And as Phil alluded to as well, both of the basins on the site are also proposed to be vegetated with a series of different herbations plants in the lower areas that'll be more well-suited to that hydraulic condition. The side slopes of the basins will be planted with some mercurious material and some shrubs, and then kind of the edges of the basins will be planted with trees to really bring up kind of that reforestation. So, you know, in fifteen years, this will be a building kind of sitting in the middle of a big reforestation effort to kind of minimize the impact that's being done in its current use today. So that's kind of the, kind of high-level look at the landscape, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions, if you have any.
We're okay for now, thank you.
Sure. So the site lighting is broken down into a number of categories. Again, we're looking at a pedestrian scale for pathway lighting to something that's a little bit taller, an eight-foot scale pole to a fourteen-foot tall for around the parking areas. So those are represented in the different symbols, whoops, that you can see through here. So the parking scale, lighting through here, these are all LED, downcast shield to ensure no spillover off property line. There is some lighting here at the entry that's being proposed with a small sign and some lighting proposed on that. We have some architecturally mounted lights at the entryways. And again, along this kind of front walkway is more of the pedestrian bollard-style downcast
I guess I'll touch on a couple more things before I think we'll conclude the presentation. One of them is traffic. What we have done is we have submitted a full traffic study. We had our engineers go out in November of last year, take the counts, take the traffic counts. We had them go back out in December to do a gap and delay analysis to make sure that this would not adversely affect University Drive or any of the surrounding roadways. Given the use, I think they came up with twenty-three new peak morning trips and forty-nine new peak afternoon trips. And ultimately, they determined, as you've got in your packet, that it's, the project is not expected to result in a significant increase in the number of vehicles on the study area roadways or in vehicle travel delay in the vicinity of the project site. And then also because of the offset between this, and I talked about it at the site visit today, so I'd like to reiterate it, when we were looking where to put this entry, given the potential conflict of parking area over here, access aisle here, and then traveled way, and then same thing coming from the other direction, we wanted to offset it as much as we could while balancing and being sensitive to the wetlands that are on the southerly part of the site. And so we found that this location and removing, and also trying to only remove one tree. So we found that this location checked all those boxes to the best that we could, and it was the balance that we needed to meet. And so the traffic engineer also concludes that the project would not be expected to result in a noticeable impact to vehicles traveling to and from the land uses on the westerly side of University Drive. So we think we've done the best we can, given the site and the surrounding roadway. I will also mention management. So this is going to be mixed-use. There is an office on-site, it'll be an office where people don't come to. It's not like guests or visitors will come, there will be, you know, likely one individual there. It's not specifically for this use. So if it's used as a rental office, it's not just for this property. If it's a development office, it's not just for this property. So it's, and I don't have the number in front of me, but it's a use that does not invite public to come to that office space. The balance of the units, the thirty-six units, will be rented. And Barry, who's sitting here with us this evening, who has experience both as a commercial and residential landlord, will be the manager of that property. We've got Jason Edwards from curb to curb, who is taking care of the maintenance, the landscaping, the snow plowing, et cetera. The complete response plan, everything goes through Barry. We have what I would consider a pretty strong lease, some pretty strong terms about trespassing or if found that you're parking over here, it's evictable. We're also putting some security cameras up on this fence to monitor both this parking lot and also the southerly Butters parking lot, just to make sure that people from this development aren't inappropriately parking over here. We have a parking permit system where each of the tenants will get a parking decal that will be associated with their registration, which will give them the right and ability to park on the site. We track a lot of the strong language of the Amherst general bylaw for noise and other violations. It's going to be a no smoking site and a no pet site as well. And I think, you know, we're happy to have Barry talk about his experience, but, you know, also, I should mention, we're going to have a live-in manager. So there's going to be somebody living on the site who is actually in charge of some day-to-day operations. And if, also if you know Barry, he'll be by the site every day, a few times a day, because that's just the type of manager and owner he is. So I think with that, we'll, I don't think I missed anything, we'll conclude our presentation.
Want to talk about Phil?
Oh.
Not Phil Henry, but actual Phil.
Guess who's going to talk about Phil? If you still want to talk about the MO.
Yeah. So as I had alluded to during the presentation about the grading and such, the, long story short, we're probably going to be increasing the site anywhere between two to three and a half feet of fill. We've estimated it about seventy-five hundred yards of fill that is going to be required to be brought in. That's just an estimate at this point. Obviously, we can, as is typical, we probably do a refined one and general contractors will do, or site contractors will do their own estimation. But also keep in mind that the first foot or so will probably need to be scraped off, that organic layer will probably need to be scraped off and either stockpiled or reused or carted offsite. So we've accounted for that as well, because that creates a need for additional fill. But all in all, we're, we estimated about seventy-five hundred yards.
And just to come full circle on that, you've got Section 3.122, which no special permit for fill shall be required, or no special permit shall be required for the filling of land in conjunction with the development, that requires a special permit. And so similar to what happened for the restaurant site, which required a special permit, this also requires a special permit. So we're just suggesting that no additional or separate special permit is required for what we're looking to do with the fill on the site. Of course, you know, there are some provisions in Section 5.10 that if the board wanted to make a certain condition, you know, no slope shall be created by the fill, which shall be finished at a grade in excess of the natural angle of repose of the material, those types of things, we'll certainly, we expect to comply with that. But that's how I think we're looking to handle the fill.
Thank you.
I'll think, I'll mention one other thing. So we had SWCA do a hydro geological analysis of the site to make sure that the groundwater wouldn't, that this development would not adversely affect this development or any of the surrounding developments because of the groundwater. We're happy to submit it as part of it, that's why I think Mr. Jemzick has had to recuse, or else I know why Mr. Jemzick has had to recuse himself, because he's the one that performed it. But that was the conclusion, is that it's not going to impact the southerly Butters or the site itself because of the separation from where groundwater is. And really, the fill that's going on-site, and what Jack had done is taken into consideration, there's going to be a little utility basement here, he took that into consideration, and also all of the fill that was going to be brought on-site. So, you know, we're not concerned with any ground, any effects on groundwater because of this development. And so I think with that, hopefully, with the colors and the proposal and all of the safeguards we've got in place, this is a project that the board could see fit to approve for site plan, a couple of special permits and grant that waiver on parking.
Great, thanks so much for your presentation. Our next item is a report on the site visit, so we have a written site visit report in our packets. I believe the one item that maybe wasn't described in detail is that there's a public shade tree being requested to be removed and the public shade tree committee tree warden have agreed to that. It doesn't come before us because it's not, University Drive is not a scenic road. Would anyone that was present at the site visit like to add anything? Nope? Okay. We also have a development application report that has been prepared by staff. I believe staff identified four issues to consider, the, I'd say substantive ones relating to the special permits for the parking waiver and the height. Also a recommendation that we may require via conditions, the submission and approval of a construction logistics plan. And that we may wish to receive a note from the fire department with comments, which we haven't yet approved, received. we haven't yet approved, received. The development application report is a draft. Is there anything, Chris, more that we would expect on this? Chris?
Well, since I, I knew you were going to be continuing the public hearing, and I was kind of rushed to put this draft together, I marked it a draft to give an opportunity to add things, if there were things to add. I don't think there is anything, based on what I've heard tonight, but if I do find anything, I'll, I'll write it in italics, so you'll know what's been changed, all right?
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on then to questions from the board. Rob?
The only question I have is about the, the office. This is, we're asked to consider this a mixed-use building. And, and I don't, I don't really have a problem with that, because actually, the, the original proposal, you know, was, I think, a more interesting proposal. I understand why you want a mixed-use building. That makes sense to me. So I, the only thing is, I'm a little worried that it, it sets a precedent for a mixed-use building being something that has a 200-square-foot office in it. And I would like to know that that office is available for lease to you, or me, or anyone. It's not necessarily going to be, like you said, a development office for, for Mr. Roberts' business, for instance.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could accept as a condition that exact statement. That's not the intent to, and it was one of the things that we had talked about with the building commissioner, and he was very clear that it cannot be exactly what you've said that it cannot be. And that's the crux of allowing this here. You know, in, in your other districts, and I'm just looking it up, I think it's the commercial zoning district, that has a percentage of gross floor area, the first floor, that has to be dedicated to certain uses. In this zoning district, it just doesn't exist. But, but yeah, as, as far as a condition goes, we would certainly, and I, you know, we can find, we based the parking off of it being a certain type of that office. So if you wanted to go use it and have, you know, whether it's mail order or whatever it is, not have people come and meet with you, that's what we've designed it to be. But yeah, certainly we'll accept the condition to that effect.
I believe it was mentioned earlier in relation to the housing authority's recommendation of the bedroom mix for the affordable units, that a written statement could be produced to that effect. So we know this is going to be continued, and it would be helpful for me to see that, if possible, at our next meeting.
Sure. I've got it now, if you'd like to see it.
Oh, perfect. There you go. Already supplied.
So I think it's, it's worth commenting on, on that, just for the benefit of, of the planning board and people who are listening. The, the current inclusionary zoning bylaw does not require a commensurate bedroom size and everything with, with, with the overall development. The, our proposed amendment does, but it also includes the ability for the permitting body to, to vary that or waive that. And that's specifically because, for example, this case, you can't possibly perfectly replicate it anyway. And if there is, if there is a recommendation by the housing authority or by the Affordable Housing Trust that we actually want a different grouping of affordable units, we would like to be able to take advantage of that. And so this is, you know, this is a good illustration of why we have that clause in, in the amendment.
Other questions from the board at this time? Comments, questions from the public? Applicants' response? Anything they'd like to add?
Do we have any homework to do? I, I think I heard getting the fire department to provide something in writing to the planning department that they are satisfied with. We've got, I think, two fire hydrants, maybe one here and one down here, and then we've run the fire apparatus, truck turn, our traffic engineers had run that. So we're comfortable that it will work, but we can get that all confirmed in writing from Mike Roy and the fire department. Fully sprinkled building is, as well.
Great. So I do believe that we had a time specific in mind for the continuation of this. Is it 8:00 PM next Wednesday? Chris?
I think it's going to be a little later than 8:00 PM, because there's a meeting in this room between 6:00 and 8:00. So I suggested 8:15, 8:15 on April 25th, which is next Wednesday.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to continue to next Wednesday at 8:15.
I move to continue this hearing until Wednesday, April 25th. That's 8:15.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. We'll see you next week.
Thanks a lot. See you in a week.
Thank you. So we're going to move on next. We'll let everyone circulate out to our 7:30 item. Oh, we're not even at 7:30 yet.
Or 8:30.
Oh, okay. Oh, that just flew right by. Wow. Such a good presentation. Okay. So this is SPRC 2018-12, Applebrook LLC, 1194 West Street, requesting amendment to site plan review for cluster. SPRC 2017-00014 decision. Condition number one, to modify the condition requiring installation of a crosswalk across West Street, formerly map 25B parcel 29, currently map 25B parcels 29, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, and 76 in the RO and RLD zoning district. Are there any board member disclosures on this? Okay. We'll take the applicant's presentation.
Great. Good evening. My name is David Burson from Bacon Wilson. I'm here on behalf of Applebrook West LLC, who is the owner of the, the Applebrook Cluster subdivision. So we've been here a, a number of times on this, on this application, and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds on the history of this one, because it goes back to 2007. But just very briefly, 2007, there was an approval of a cluster, cluster subdivision, which was subject to an appeal. The appeal was resolved in 2011. There was a, a modified plan filed in 2017, which was, which was approved. And that was, we were subsequently here on February 21st of this year, seeking a modification of that 2017 site plan review approval, seeking some modifications relative to the lot shapes after discussion with the town and moving the trailhead access. So one of the things that, that had actually come up at that last February 21st meeting, public, public hearing, was we were also seeking a modification of one of, of the condition relative to the crosswalk that showed up in the 2017 approval. Because it hadn't been appropriately noticed at that time, we are back here before you tonight specifically just for that one condition. So that being said, in 2017, when that cluster subdivision was approved, there was a condition, the very first condition, which essentially made it a requirement that the applicant install a crosswalk across 116 from this subdivision to the existing sidewalk on the other side of the street. The, it raised some, some issues for us relative to complying with the approval, because, quite frankly, the installation of that crosswalk would require approval not, not only from the Transportation Advisory Committee, but also the select board, meaning that if we, for some reason, despite our best efforts, attempted to get a crosswalk and were unable to, we would then be not, in not, not in compliance with the actual site plan review approval. Additionally, and some of the board members may recall, when this was discussed on February 21st, there was discussion relative to the discussion that happened in 2017 regarding the crosswalk, because my client had never proposed paying for the crosswalk. And as the, some of the board members may recall, the discussion was actually relative to seeking some input from the Transportation Advisory Committee, whether or not a crosswalk was even feasible and/or, you know, desirable in that location. So ultimately, what we're seeking is we're seeking a modification of that condition number one, essentially stating that, you know, the Transportation Advisory Commission, or Committee should consider a crosswalk in this location, and if they decide that a crosswalk is, is appropriate in this location, that we would work with the town essentially to install that crosswalk. The, just, one of the additional pieces of that condition was that the crosswalk was supposed to be of the type that was located on the notch. We actually went and inspected that crosswalk today. Another issue with that condition being that the Transportation Advisory Committee may decide that that's not the type of crosswalk that they would want in that location. And as I'm sure this board is aware, there's a huge disparity as far as pricing is concerned with respect to a simple crosswalk and, and those that require the, the lights and the walk signals. And it's, quite frankly, more of a financial commitment than my client is, is really able to accommodate if, if the Transportation Advisory Committee were to decide, no, we need a full-lit crosswalk with blinking lights and whatnot across that roadway. We think that's appropriate, considering that this crosswalk would not only benefit the people living in the subdivision, but it would also benefit the individuals who are seeking access to the trailhead, the town's new trailhead to those, the, the trails back there, as well as people maybe parking at Atkins and looking to seek, to seek access to the trailhead, and/or people parking at the trailhead and looking to walk to Atkins. So we think it, that, we think it'd be more equitable if we had an opportunity to speak with the town regarding the actual allocation of price associated with that crosswalk.
Thanks for that. So are you proposing a specific modification, specific language to that condition?
We are. So I had proposed, in my application language, the effect that the town of Amherst, through its Transportation Advisory Committee, shall consider the installation of a crosswalk similar to the crosswalk at the top of the notch on Route 116, on the west side of the property, across West Street. And in the event the Transportation Advisory Committee determines this type of crosswalk is appropriate in this location, the applicant shall work in conjunction with the Transportation Advisory Committee and select board to have the crosswalk installed and approved. I'd additionally put applicant shall share costs associated with the aforementioned crosswalk installation up to $2,500. Because of the fact that it was, it was wisely pointed out that this board can't really commit the town to sharing the cost of a crosswalk, I think it would be advisable to maybe even remove that line. That $2,500 was really premised on a conversation with Peter Wells and communication with Peter Wells, who got us a price for the crosswalk, and it was apparently anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 to install that type of crosswalk.
Chris?
Just to have the amount in writing, you might consider something like the applicant has offered to share costs associated with the aforementioned pension crosswalk, or something to that effect.
In the condition?
Yeah.
So that would somewhat go counter to what Mr. Burson said about the board not being in a position to ask such a thing? Would you disagree with that?
I'm just saying if the applicant offers.
I see.
Rather than the board saying, you shall.
As opposed to saying the town shall pay for half, stating the applicant is willing to pay for.
It's just putting it in writing.
Hmm. And this is just my recollection of the conversation about the cost here, but that recollection is that one of these fancier crosswalks could cost up to $50,000.
I had heard $30,000 to $50,000 was what I had been.
On the other end of that equation, my recollection was $10,000 being the figure for the simpler crosswalk.
So, so this figure, we went back, this is before the February 21st meeting. We asked Peter Wells to give us an estimate of what it actually, you know, what that would cost, and he had told us $4,000 to $5,000, so.
Okay. Anything else in your presentation before we move on to our next steps?
That is it.
Okay.
Unless you would like to look at pictures of the crosswalk at the notch. I didn't, I didn't think so.
Okay. Chris?
I did have thoughts driving through there recently, and also today when we were walking there, that it may be appropriate to put in one of the more elaborate type of crosswalks there. And, you know, getting advice from the TAC and the town engineer is going to be really important. It is a, there's good site distance on both sides as you come out of the new driveway or new roadway. But people do drive very quickly down the hill, and, you know, there probably is going to be need for signage ahead of the crosswalk and potentially some flashing lights like there are on Pine Street. So it could be, it could end up being more elaborate than the crosswalk at the notch. So I'm just offering that as my observation.
And I would echo that also. That road, when there's weather, is a bad, is a, makes it that much more sort of important to get the experts invested in this.
And it may be that, that they find that it's not an appropriate location for a crosswalk at all, which was part of our point, was that, you know, if we did go to them and seek permission, and then they say, well, this is a terrible place for a crosswalk, we could find ourselves not in compliance.
Yeah, that point is well taken. I also noticed that the timeframe of prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy has been removed, and I would suggest that that be left in such that there's a, a reason for the applicant to, to work diligently on this issue prior to the completion of the project.
My, my only concern with that being that if the town, for some reason, is, is held up in their process, that could certainly hold up our process in terms of, of actually marketing and renting and selling these lots.
Rob?
I'm going to propose different language here. I'm, I'm a little concerned about, or not concerned, but I just think it's weird that, that a condition on, on the applicant would, would obligate the town. The town shall consider. And, and furthermore, it acts, it says the applicant shall work in conjunction with a board that may not exist in a few months, or that won't exist in a few months. So I, I would suggest that the condition be, in the event the town of Amherst determines that a crosswalk is appropriate in this location, the applicant shall work in conjunction with appropriate town boards to have the crosswalk installed and improved. And I would say if we, if we wanted to say anything about the cost and have it, it sounded like you were suggesting some sort of a time limit. The applicant has offered to share costs if such a thing is built within five years of, of the date of occupancy or something like that. Right? Something like.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused with that. So it would be...
So in other words, I'm not trying to, to, if, if 20 years from now the town says, we need a crosswalk there, I, I don't, I think it's, it would be weird to come back to you and say, you know, pay up.
Understood.
But in some reasonable timeframe, you know, three to five years or something. I don't know. Or just give it, I guess it's something.
Other comments on this? Thoughts? Well, we have two proposals right now, one from the applicant and one from Rob. So are there any preferences amongst board members? Ari?
I would prefer that proposal to the applicant's.
Okay. So that seemed fairly clear to me, with the exception that the timeframe is still somewhat up in the air. So I think you had said within five years of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy?
Or some, or some notable event, you know, whatever.
I would suggest a shorter timeframe than that. Chris?
What, what should happen within five years? That the applicant work with the town to determine if this is necessary, and then if it is determined that it's necessary, work with the town to design and install it? Is that what you're saying?
I think, so would it be like, for instance, just as a hypothetical, so within, within two years of certificate of occupancy, applicant shall have met with the Transportation Advisory Committee and/or select board in the, for the purposes of, of this crosswalk discussion?
That's not what I was getting at. I was, I was, I was trying to incorporate the offer of, of sharing costs. So the, the applicant has offered to share costs if, if a sidewalk is installed within X number of months or years.
The only thing I would say to that is, is I, I 100% agree with that, with the sentiment. If, if we could tie it, once again, because the original condition was tied to the type of crosswalk, if we can tie it to that type of crosswalk. And the only reasoning being, once again, if for some reason the Transportation Advisory Committee decides, no, we need a $50,000 crosswalk here, I think that $25,000 is going to be much more than my client could, could bear realistically.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I share costs up to, up to a certain amount.
I feel that the existing language proposed would not require the applicant to pay half of the crosswalks. of the crosswalk's installation cost. It seems that it says applicant shall share costs associated with the aforementioned crosswalk up to $2,500.
But it, it does say similar to the crosswalk at the top of the notch on Route 116, just tying it. I mean, we can take out the language associated with the $2,500, I'm just suggesting that we tie the cost sharing to the type of crosswalk. In the event that, that your estimate comes out to be correct and it's actually $10,000, you know, we're still, we're still willing to pay for half of that type of crosswalk.
So is that to say that if the town determines that a $50,000 crosswalk is needed, the applicant would not want to contribute $2,500 towards that?
I'm sure that, I'm sure they would, they just don't want to be on the hook for, for half at that point.
Right, and I didn't necessarily read it to be saying that. So it also sounds like the applicant is suggesting that they not be liable for more than $2,500.
$2,500 is really, I mean, that's just based on what our, what we had received as, as an estimate for that type of crosswalk. I mean, if it's a, it's a relatively straightforward crosswalk, I mean, we, we did look at it today, it's, it effectively aligns two signs and, and concrete pads where the, the crosswalk begins.
So why don't we, oh.
Chris, and then Ari.
So why don't we say something like the applicant has offered to contribute $2,500 towards the construction of the crosswalk?
That's fair.
Ari?
Yeah, I was just going to say that maybe this crosswalk in two and a half years will cost more, so I think it makes more sense to actually put a dollar on it.
I think that makes a lot more sense than what I was trying to do.
It's very concise. So are board members in agreement with that approach?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned though, because it might, if it's a condition that was accepted for several, for a few, for a while now, and that, and as I asked earlier today, that there's been no contact between you and the Transportation Advisory Committee just, just to see about the feasibility. I, I mean, the developer had, had agreed to this condition and to remove it and then put the obligation on the town for a cause seems to me, I'm a little, I'm not quite sure if I'm comfortable with that.
So, so if I may, and part of the discussion that actually occurred in, in February was that, so we, we hadn't actually agreed to this condition, and in fact, we never proposed the crosswalk condition, and it's, it's our take and our, our position is that, that the condition as drafted did not reflect the conversations that occurred at the actual meeting and at the hearing.
Okay. I'm not, and if I could, David, I'm not reading what Chris had suggested to be obligating the town to construct a crosswalk. I think it's reflecting that the applicant has offered to contribute $2,500 if the town decides a crosswalk is needed.
And, and we're happy to have a timeframe associated with going before the Transportation Advisory Committee and actually meeting with them. I mean, that's, that's not an issue for us.
And I think we would incorporate Rob's language that he proposed at first, in the event that the town of Amherst determines that a crosswalk is appropriate in this location, then these things follow.
Is that agreeable to all? Rob?
Yeah, I was going to kind of fill in, David, from my memory of, of, of the process, which I'm surprised that it was a year ago that we did this, I guess it was. We, when we were reviewing the site plan, we thought that a, a crosswalk might be appropriate there, that it might be a good idea to have a crosswalk in that area. I think the applicant was skeptical, doubtful. But we didn't really have a way of evaluating whether there should be a crosswalk or not, and so we thought that, that it would be appropriate to get a recommendation from, from the Transportation Advisory Committee or someone before imposing a, a condition of, of a crosswalk. The applicant offered, I, I recall, to participate in that process. And so the, the condition was an attempt to capture that, the spirit of, if, you know, if, if a crosswalk is determined to be appropriate, then the applicant will be part of that process or part of, of making that happen. If, if the crosswalk is not appropriate, then, then the applicant is not obligated.
And, and just to amend my earlier comments, because I think it may have been misconstrued, I wasn't suggesting that, that we were not on board with a potential crosswalk, I was just suggesting that we hadn't proposed it initially as part of our plan. That's all I was suggesting.
Jack?
Didn't, wasn't the parking area eliminated or right at the trailhead or reduced in, in the...
No, so, so, yeah, it was moved. So instead of taking up one, the lot, I believe Lot 7, Lot 7 has now been converted to a single family, and then the trailhead is actually going to be located on the land that the town is receiving as part of.
That's right, okay.
So the, the trailhead's still going to be in, you know, the same number of parking spaces, same size. But we are, I believe, going to be putting a, another crosswalk, so to speak, not to confuse the issue, between that trailhead area and the sidewalk that runs within the actual subdivision with a light there.
Michael?
I, I shared David's concern and, and Rob's memory of the last meeting. It seems to me that while it was not part of the original proposal, it was certainly agreed to or acknowledged as a reasonable condition by the, the owner at that point. And to say that you were, you know, you just stumbled upon it recently as an issue seems a little disingenuous. I, I think it was there for a long time, and now you're, this is really about money. Now you're trying to, it seems to me, to reduce the cost to the developer.
I, I don't think that's necessarily true. I think our concern was that, and we did bring it up the last time we were here, but I think the concern was that when we were here a year ago, the conversation was as, as Rob had described it, whereas we were willing, we were willing to be, be a participant in the discussion relative to the crosswalk. But as the condition is written, it makes it a, you know, an actual obligation on us to install this crosswalk where that may not be wanted and/or feasible.
Chris, could you clarify what you have now as our proposed condition? Did, did you write down Rob's?
I wrote down most of what Rob said. Let's see if I can. So in the event that the town of Amherst determines that a crosswalk is appropriate in this location, the applicant shall work with the town to have a crosswalk installed and approved or approved, approved and installed. I think that was the gist of what Rob said, and then we were adding to, to that, something to the effect of the applicant has offered to share costs if the crosswalk is installed. Does that sum it up?
Up to $2,500?
Excuse me. The applicant has offered to contribute $2,500 to the construction of a crosswalk. That's the one that we decided on.
I'm okay with that. Is there a, a motion to that effect? Rob?
I move to amend condition one to the language as, as just stated.
Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that's the last public hearing for tonight. Move on to item four, planning and zoning, and the ZSC report. Rob?
The ZSC is not planning to meet until after town meeting, and when we do, we do not anticipate taking up any new zoning amendments. Instead, we, we are, we are planning to compile a list of, of issues or amendments or, or projects that, that we have discussed over the last few years and, and/or ones that may come up between now and, and then, now and, and the end of the year, with the intent of, of compiling a report or a recommendation for the new town council to direct the future planning board. So we will solicit your input in the future.
Great, thank you. There'd been some correspondence regarding the status of town meeting warrant articles relating to zoning. We've been getting opinions from the town attorney on that. Chris, thanks for sending those updates. So as I understand it, as it now stands, town attorney is recommending that the supplemental dwelling unit article and the inclusionary zoning articles are essential and necessary and should be considered, but the other zoning related articles should not. Is that right, Chris? Marijuana as well?
Marijuana as well is considered to be necessary. I think the one that they have questions about is Article 34 because it has such a big impact. So they're recommending that town meeting take the position of making a recommendation to the new town council to act on that if, if that's what they desire to do, rather than actually making a zoning change.
And the Select Board has placed those on the warrant, but is there ongoing discussion at the Select Board about those articles? Chris?
I understand that the Select Board is really the ultimate body that's going to decide these issues and that they are continuing to discuss it, and I believe they are, they might have met today, and they're meeting on Monday, so there will be continuing discussions about this.
Great, thank you.
And may I just say one more thing? I just wanted to make sure that you all caught the fact that there was a typo on the first page of that document and that the two items in question are Article 34 and 37, not 35 and 37.
Great, thank you. No public here for comment. Any other issues on planning and zoning? Nope. Item five, town meeting, planning board reports. I believe those are all complete. Presentations have all been assigned. Are there topics not reasonably anticipated related to town meeting? Chris?
We got a really good response from our meeting yesterday. We met with TMCC and a group of town meeting members and gave them a presentation about zoning and about the zoning amendments that are coming up, and people asked a lot of questions. So I was really pleased about that. A lot of people showed up, maybe as many as 30, do you want to say? And I got a nice email today from Peg Roberts thanking us, so thank you for people who came.
Item six, old business. Any topics not reasonably anticipated? Any new business not reasonably anticipated? Any formays? Upcoming ZBA applications?
There's the aforementioned, uh, 721.
Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
The only one we have in hand is all about learning, which is the preschool in the Palmer Village area, and I'm reluctant to talk about others that we haven't actually received yet, so.
Okay, planning board, committee, and liaison reports. PVPC?
I didn't go to the last meeting. I don't know if any of the alternates did. Do you know, Chris? Okay. However, I did get a presentation of what they had a housing choice initiative presentation there, and I thought it was very interesting, and I, I don't think Chris got a chance to share that with the board, but I feel what Amherst, what I saw and what Amherst is facing is not, you know, worth our housing crunch and struggles. It's not all that different than most of the communities, a lot of the communities in, in the Pioneer Valley area, so we're unique because we all have the colleges, but we're, you know, we're ranked second to Holyoke in terms of number of rental properties, but everybody's struggling with increasing rental costs and housing costs, and so I know that we've had people come in, Mr. Hornick?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's just nice to look beyond our, our board of the town line and understand we're not the only ones facing the issues that we are.
Do our immediate surrounding towns have the same issues? Sunderland and Hadley and...
I think they, those, those towns go, you know, in a rural scenario pretty, it does change pretty rapidly outside of Amherst. But Holyoke, Amherst, Springfield, Northampton, East Hampton are like the top towns with, in terms of rentals, and I do, those, yeah, those are, I think, would be born out to be quite different. That's true, yeah.
Chris?
So I just wanted to mention in regard to Mr. Jim Six's report, I will forward the, the PowerPoint or whatever it was that you sent me. I'm sorry, I haven't done it yet, but I also wanted to mention the fact that the town of Amherst is applying to be a housing choice initiative town, and so whatever benefits we can get out of that application, we hope to get. We did apply for this about a, about a week ago. So I'll keep you informed about that.
Thank you. CPAC?
So I attended the CPAC meeting last week. Everything is ready for recommendations to town meeting, and there will be no CPAC meeting until the next cycle, so sometime in the fall. It's all good.
Okay, thanks. No one here from Ag Commission, Design Review Board?
We have not had a meeting since my last report.
Okay, same as the Housing Trust. Zoning Subcommittee, we heard, UTAC hasn't met. Downtown Parking Working Group, we have no one from. Reporter of Chair, no report? Reporter of Staff?
No report, although I'm astounded, I must say. Maybe this is a report. I'm astounded at the amount of work that it takes to have four planning board meetings in one month, and you all are doing a great job of keeping up.
Thanks, keep trying. All right, we're adjourned then. Thanks, everyone.